Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is 6:00 on July 1, 2025. This meeting of the Select Board is called to order. I know for the record this meeting is being held in person and or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting this evening? All right, seeing none. I know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Julie Straley, and Board Member Liz Klein. For those willing to amble, please stand and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move to our next agenda item, I just wanted to briefly note something on the record. Last Thursday night, the Hingham Fire Department responded to a fire at the South Shore Sports Center located at 55 Recreation Park Drive. The Fire Department performed heroically, fighting a large fire under challenging conditions. I want to thank the following Fire Departments who assisted at the scene: Rockland, Norwell, Weymouth, Hull, Cohasset, Quincy, Holbrook, Hanover, Situate, South Shore Hospital Ambulance, Department of Fire Services, the Whitman Fire Department Chief, and Boston Sparks, which is a volunteer group. We also had station coverage from Braintree and Pembroke, who both assisted with calls in Hingham throughout the night. We're all very thankful that there was no loss of life or serious injuries as a result of this fire. The sports center was home to South Shore Select Soccer and South Shore Baseball Club. Both organizations have instilled a love of sports in thousands of children, including my own children. Both people don't know this, but when I was in law school, I actually made pizza at the sports center. I was a bartender for several years. Just want to note that our thoughts are with both organizations and all those impacted by this tragic event. And I would note that we have with us this evening two distinguished members of our Fire Department, Deputy Chief Lou Lechance and Deputy Chief Dave Levinson. So thank both of you gentlemen for your heroic acts last Thursday night and all the entire Fire Department.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes. Julie, ready to proceed?
Yes, I make a motion to...
I'm going to ask Liz, you ready to proceed too?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 10, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, by real call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, all the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Tri-County Contractor Supply for Whacker Newson Excavator for the Department of Public Works. We have David Sequer with us as well as Ashley Sanford. So is Ashley on the line?
Don't see her yet.
Okay, all right. David, why don't you go ahead and tell us about this? We have any questions, we'll work through you with Tom.
Sounds good. Thank you. So this is a, the attached contract before the board tonight is for a mini excavator that will be utilized by DPW. This is actually going to be trading for the 2013 Trackless Machine that was in the Warren Article, Warren Article 11. The excavator's main usage will be to rebuild stormwater drainage pipes. In addition to that, it has a mower head attachment capability to clear street-side vegetation that includes trees, shrubs, and other greenery located on the streets and sidewalks as well. The delivery date is scheduled for July 9, so pretty quick. And the projected lifespan for this specific machine can range between 15 to 20 years, depending on the usage. And one thing to note, there was a, like a convention a few months back that Ashley was able to attend with some crew members as well, and they were able to actually try out this specific model and a couple of other models as well. So they were able to, you know, to kind of pick this one for their needs. This is an OSD contract, state contract, and I mean, that's pretty much about it. Let me see if there's anything else. And any of the specific questions?
David, thank you. Liz, do you have any questions?
So I see that this is the, it reflects the extended warranty option.
Yes.
Is that pretty typical, the five-year?
Yes. Good, thank you for bringing that up. It does. We had the option to do that, and Ashley chose to move forward with the extended premium option, yes.
Okay.
It is, it is pretty typical, yeah.
Okay, great. And this, the funding is coming from the warrant article, the extra capital?
That's correct.
That was approved, right?
There was a Trackless Machine originally that DPW was going to purchase, but it was a, this one was a better fit for the need of the department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Julie, any questions?
No, just a comment that I know Ashley was really excited that her team was able to test drive this machine.
Yes.
So I think that's great that you were able to pick something that could work for Hingham itself.
That's right.
Thank you.
Great. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? I've seen none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Tri-County Contractor Supply Corporation for a Whacker Newson Excavator for the Department of Public Works in amount not to exceed $185,831.50.
Second.
All those in favor, by real call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, all the motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Colonial Ford Corporation doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for a 2025 Ford Explorer XLT to be used by the Fire Prevention Officer. David, if you could stay up here, and Lou, do you mind coming up as well? Or Lev, you can both come up if you'd like.
I'll go there, boy.
We'll keep you there in case we have any questions. All right. All right. Lou, why don't you kind of start us off, tell us about the vehicle you're asking us to purchase this evening?
So this is for the Fire Prevention Officer, who is a day schedule. He does, he's responsible for the court enforcement and inspections around town. So this is to replace his 2017 Ford Explorer. Just a standard administration vehicle, come in fully equipped with the lights, sirens, radios. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. David, anything to add?
Just to, just to note quickly, I know that it was on the memo, but the trade-in values we've noticed are not what they really were. So I know I'm speaking to Deputy Chief Levinson. The idea is to probably keep one of the older ones and then probably kind of reach out to the other departments that may need this vehicle. And then if not, we can send it out to a surplus auction to try to get what we can for it.
Great, thank you. Julie, any questions?
Yeah, the Police Department, their cruisers are hybrid vehicles, a lot of them. Did you ever look into doing hybrid for this type of car? I know that the same, for the Ford Explorer, it's the same car that they use hybrid fashion.
I can jump in just real quick, I have a question about whether you're considering it as something for you to answer, but just informational. The Chief is backing off those hybrid vehicles on the Police Department because they're constantly in and out of the shop.
Okay.
They're failing left and right. But I just wanted to, I don't know what you and the Chiefs, your decision process was.
Yeah, so the same. Lot of departments across the Commonwealth having issues with the hybrid vehicles.
Okay.
In and out of the shop, parts, delays, it was, just didn't seem very feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Just to confirm, this is being funded through the capital budget?
Correct.
Right for FY '26. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any members in public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? I've seen none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Colonial Ford Corporation doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for a 2025 Ford Explorer XLT for the Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $60,797.20.
Second.
All those in favor, by real call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, all the motion carries unanimously. Good seeing you, Lou.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, good seeing you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Hingham Maritime Center Annual Update. This is an agenda item that we do every year, usually in the spring or early summer. And we have with us Tom Curtis and Liza McKinnon, going to present. So Tom, if you could just state your name, address, position, that'd be great.
Yeah, so Tom Curtis, 19 Andrews Isle, Hingham. I'm the president of the Maritime Center.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. So it's my honor to be here presenting tonight on behalf of the HMCE. My current role is the president of the board. I take immense pride in my responsibility in this role. In 1971, when the Maritime Center was first incorporated as Lincoln Sound Club, my grandparents, Tom Curtis, Bill Greddy, and Ginny Greddy were three of the original seven board members. Tom was the first board president, and Ginny was the first executive director, who she held for over three decades. My parents met at a Lincoln fundraiser, and one of my first jobs was teaching adult sailing on Monday nights as a young teenager. So I take it as a great honor to hold this title and to be a part of HMCE's story. I'm pleased to be supported here tonight with a couple of members of our leadership team, Liza McKinnon, our board secretary and former board president, and Stephanie Robinson, current Waterfront Director. If we go to slide three, please. 2024 marks HMCE's 54th year of continuous operation, all from Barnes Wharf, where HMCE has offered members of Hingham and our neighboring communities the opportunity to get out on the water. No boat ownership or private club membership required. Next slide. HMCE offers four core programs: sailing, rowing, paddle boarding, and Little Mariners. In 2024, we saw over 750 individual participants over the course of the summer season across these programs. Our sailors age and range from seven years old to 70, and an experience from novice to serious racers. Many of our sailors who graduate through our programs go on to race at a high level, including for their high school teams and many times carrying on into college. Others just grow to love being on the water, undersail, and go on to cruise the waters of New England and beyond. Our rowing program is a great success story. 25 years ago, there was no formal rowing in Hingham Harbor, and today, HMCE teaches and trains hundreds of people each year. Our youth rowing program is designed to teach the fundamentals. Our high school and college development class trains rowers to be competitive at the highest levels, and our adult classes offer novices an opportunity to try the sport, and a devoted group of adults who use rowing as a primary mode of exercise come back year after year. Paddling is one of our newer offerings and provides a more casual way for people to experience the joys of Hingham Harbor from sea level. Paddling is accessible for all ages, as long as you're willing to get wet. Little Mariners is a STEM-based marine exploration program designed for kids ages five to seven years old. Little Mariners introduces kids to a wide variety of marine life that lives all around, including porcian crabs, birds, fish, flora, and the mud of Hingham Harbor. Captured with a trip to one of the harbor islands each week, Little Mariners gives kids the freedom to explore and the knowledge to appreciate and to bring their lessons home to their parents and siblings about the cool marine life that we share our harbor with. HMCE is a proud partner with HHS Sailing and HHS Rowing Association. While most people are still skiing, HMCE launched its stocks in mid-March for the beginning of the spring season to provide both teams access to the water for training and to host competitions. This allows our teams to get the most out of their seasons and to remain competitive year after year, as evidenced by two state rowing titles in a year and a sailing A Division title for the first time in 16 years. Two of HMCE's most special partnerships last season were with Sunset Point Camp and SNAP, the Special Needs Athletic Partnership, where HMCE was able to offer free programming to get more than 80 people on the water throughout the season. For many of them, this was their first time in a boat in any capacity. HMCE also hosted some of the seniors from Linden Ponds at a luncheon, as well as in a Little Mariners-type course graciously offered at 30 Summer Street down on the Rotary. Last year, we pivoted from our traditional Harbor Feast annual fundraiser into a new concept of a pop-up beer garden hosted monthly throughout the summer. In partnership with Untold Brewing at Situate, this new format brought an entirely new group of community members to Barnes Wharf. As it has been dubbed, the Stroller Brigade would start rolling down Summer Street around 5:00, and young families would experience the magic of Barnes Wharf sunsets, often for the first time. Through this event, we hosted over 1,600 people across five Thursdays from May to September. Often starting as participants, many employees often grow up to that program and itch for the day that they can join the staff of instructors and coaches. Many will work through their high school years and into college. Eventually, they have to leave their summers on the wharf and water behind and get a real job, but oftentimes, they come back and become a part of our leadership team. They are resilience, responsible, driven, and amazingly nice and good-natured kids and young adults. HMCE employees are our greatest asset, and they are one of the core reasons for our many years of success. We are run by a board of volunteer board members who meet monthly throughout the year but who spend many more hours, daily and weekly, working to improve the Maritime Center and to keep the program running at a high level for all the participants who come through our gate. We're looking forward to another great season, which is already underway, and we fully appreciate the support of the Select Board and the Town of Hingham, whose support is critical to our continued success. Do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to note that I enjoyed our conversation, that me, you, Liza, and I had a 30 Summer Street on Monday, and I appreciated you taking the time to meet with me and look at the property. And congratulations on just what was another great year, very successful organization. It's just wonderful to see HMCE doing so well and have so many, you know, to touch all different age groups, from children, as you mentioned, but also, I think Liza told me, your adult sailing program is one of the most popular. And it's just great seeing that you're able to reach out to all segments of the community. So congratulations on a great year. Liz, want to add anything?
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you, Tom and Liza, for all you do in the entire board. And Stephanie, you're obviously running an amazing program. It's a beautiful presentation. I love seeing Jack's photos, too. Just give Jack Burns a little plug there. But it's an amazing legacy that you are continuing, and to see the success of the sailing and rowing program, how much it's grown and how well those students are doing is really amazing. And as Bill said, just being able to give multi-generations just access to the water is certainly just amazing and a goal of ours. So thank you for doing that. So yeah, congrats on a great season, and I'm sure you're off to a great start already.
We are, yeah. No, thank you all for your support and for your time tonight, having us here. It's always a great honor to be in front of the Select Board, and we look forward to coming back next year and updating you on another great season.
And thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your great leadership and stewardship of a very important organization in our town. And giving people access to our harbor is essential and important. I'm just really excited. I didn't know about the outreach to Sunset Point Camp and to SNAP. And I just think that's great, that you can get even more groups of kids in, onto the water who wouldn't ordinarily have that opportunity. So thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the founding principles. I remember my grandmother often talking about working with the MEKO program at that time, giving kids an opportunity that they otherwise wouldn't have, or other kids that had maybe been through juvenile delinquency programs, and how much it can change people's outlook and attitude in life in general. Whether they continue on sailing or not, you know, building independence and resiliency is really, you know, what they walk away with.
Agreed.
It's also a benefit to our staff to see those kids.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a great camp, Sunset.
They benefit greatly from wearing their life and spirit. It's a brilliant piece of design.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any members, Liza, do you want anything about Thompson? No? Great. Any members in the public have any, any other comments or questions for Tom? All right. Thanks for all you do, Tom, Liza, Stephanie. Hope you all have a great, great holiday. Take care.
Happy holidays. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is an Independence Day Drone Light Show Celebration update and other festivities. I think Art's going to lead on this one?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Just, I think we just have one more opportunity to touch on, actually, three events that are important to the town and important to the celebration of the independence of our country over the next few days. Just want to touch briefly on the Hingham Harbor Celebration, which is set for tomorrow night, as well as on July 4, the road race and the town parade. I am going to do one thing to make this fledgeable there. As many of you may have heard or seen, Hingham is on track for its first drone show tomorrow evening as part of a Hingham Harbor Celebration organized by several sponsors, including the Hingham Harbor Development Committee, the Hingham Historical Society, the Hingham Lions Club, and all of this supported with a generous donation from the Riley family. The event kicks off at 6:00 with food trucks open and available, with a concert that will follow at 7:00, live concert featuring Booty Vortex, as well as at dark, a drone show will likely start around 9:15 or so. That will include hundreds of drones that will fly in coordination in such ways to present different images and displays that highlight Hingham's history, as well as the birth of our nation. I just wanted to point out a few things. This event is at the Hingham Bathing Beach, but it's actually spread out along Hingham Harbor. The best viewing is actually achieved while standing in the Bathing Beach parking lot and facing the water. There will be very limited parking here, and I just wanted to point out that for folks who will be driving, to look for other options, obviously, the Station Street parking lot is the biggest single-town resource. There will be some parking available in the parking lot that supports the boat ramp, and there's certainly on-street parking, you know, throughout the square. And it just suggests that folks plan ahead and take some, take some care with that. Food trucks will be available in a spot, you know, in between the boat launch parking lot and the Brewed Awakenings area, and it promises to be a great time. I'm certainly looking forward to it.
It's red-eye roasters.
Red-eye roasters, excuse me. Just a couple other, just touching on a couple of other events. The road race is a little bit of a Hingham tradition sponsored by our Rec Department and others. It's a four-and-a-half-mile course, starting at 7:00 AM at Hingham Middle School. There'll be support services available for folks who are out there running, especially if it's as hot a day as we had seen last week. And registration is available online through the Hingham Rec website. And I also want to be sure we touch on the parade. It's another Hingham tradition that I understand there is evidence of parades going back to 1827. So this is something that touches on not just the town's history, but the history of our nation. It's set to kick off at 10:00 AM at the intersection of Middle and North Street. It will follow generally a northerly route, mostly along Main Street, then turning east and right onto Station Street, and is expected to be complete at about 11:15. There's, there are a number of parking restrictions along the way, you know, people should keep aware of that. But that also means with this very long course, there'll be many great viewing places for folks to take advantage of this great event. And pending any questions? That's it.
And I was going to note, too, Harbor Media reached out to me this afternoon, asked me to put out that, they're asking people to join Harbor Media Live on Main Street starting at 9:00 AM for their annual pre-show, hosted by Harbor Media's Executive Director, Michelle Bocconi, and Brian Sullivan, who was a former PBS reporter. Enjoy interviews with local community members and all the pre-parade excitement. Live parade coverage will start around 10:30 AM as it reaches the Harbor Media's broadcast location, and full coverage can be caught on Harbor Media's HG channels on Comcast 1072, Verizon 2131, or you can stream it live on their website by clicking on HTTPS: www.harbormedia.org. So I just wanted to add to that. And in terms of, you know, comments, I would note that this week in Hingham is without a doubt, I would submit to anyone, the best week in our community. It really is such a great time that people come together. Everybody enjoys the parade. If you're a runner and you've never done the road race, I would submit to you, it's probably one of the best road races on the entire South Shore. It's a great way to start the morning. The parade is, as I pointed out, is a historic parade and really one of the great community events we have. And we're so fortunate this year to bring back the tradition of the, of the event at the harbor. I know for years we did fireworks. Obviously, that's not something I think we can do going forward. So, you know, the Riley family donated a significant amount of money in honoring their son, Michael, to bring that event back. And yeah, I'm so thrilled for it. So many great organizations and individuals have contributed to it, and I hope everybody gets out and enjoys it, and everybody really has a great week. So Julie, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm just looking forward to all the events. It is one of the best weeks in Hingham.
Definitely.
Liz, you want anything?
Yes, well, I look forward to seeing everyone. It is a wonderful time for our community to come together, and it takes lots of volunteers to pull this off. So thank you to everyone in advance, and a special thanks to the Riley family. We're really looking forward to being together tomorrow.
Great. Does anybody have any questions about this agenda item and what the events are scheduled for this week? All right, seeing none. We would now move to FY '25 year-end transfers. I believe we have Ann McNaughton with us. Seeing you. Ann, come on up. How you doing, Ann? Good to see you.
Good, how are you?
Good. I think what we'll do, Ann, why don't you walk us through all of the reserve fund transfers, and then we'll vote them, and then we'll move on to have you brief us on the intra-department transfers, and we'll vote those.
Okay, so there's seven reserve fund transfers for accounting, legal services, police, town hall, town meeting, workers' compensation, and unemployment. We'll start with accounting. We are asking for $29,300. There's an $18,303.53 deficit. There's usually $12,100 budget. We've had consulting for some transition that we've done in Munis for payroll and accounting. We've done improvements in automation in our department. We've also used a consultant to calculate some retroactive salaries for police and fire. And we're asking for a $5,000 buffer for any encumbrances that we might have unanticipated in those lines. The reserve, next is legal services. This is a structural deficit that we have every year in expenses. The original budget had $395,372. There's a deficit of $165,085.44, and we're requesting $271,651. We cover basic areas of general counsel, real estate, litigation, and personnel, and it's very difficult to anticipate what you will have for legal expenses, which is probably most likely why we continue to have a structural deficit in that category. Next is police. We are asking for $400,000, and that is to cover the retroactive collective bargaining agreement that is going to cover, going back to 7/1/24, and that is going to go into salaries.
Just to add to that really quick, since we're still in the process of calculating the retropayments, it may or may not need this much money from the reserve fund, but we're asking to transfer it to police so that when those retropayments are ready in the next couple of weeks, we've already encumbered this money, we have it to... in the next couple of weeks, we've already encumbered this money, we have it to process the payments that are for FY '25, and anything we don't use will fall back to fund balance. So we'd rather be safe than sorry in transferring that amount right now.
And the fourth one is to town hall, and it is going to Capitol, and we have some boilers that need to be installed. I believe that we have two out of five boilers that are currently out of service, and it costs about $10,000 to install those, so we are asking for a request of $25,500. We also, for number five, town meeting, we anticipated, we budgeted for one night of town meeting. We had two nights of town meetings, so we are asking for 77, I'm sorry, $31,000 to go into expenses. The original budget was $77,700. Next, we have the workers' compensation, and we separate those categories because we wanted to keep them separate for the 3.5% cap for the MOA that we have. So these last two items are outside that because they're shared services. Workers' compensation, we originally had $330,000. We have a deficit of $183,000, and we're asking for $210,000. And the last one here is unemployment, and we have not received May and June's invoices for unemployment, and we're asking for $112,971. We originally had a $40,000 budget for that, so that is underbudgeted as well.
All right, let's stop you there and see if anybody has any questions about the transfers that Ann just went over. Julie, do you have any questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Starting with the town hall, I had started to talk to Michelle about my questions about the replacement of the boiler, and it's a good explanation here, the reason to why these funds are needed to replace boilers. But I was wondering about how the boilers were not in the Capitol Outlay Committee's five-year plan for town hall, and then just sort of the difference between the boilers and the fact that we also have heat pumps and how that all works. Do they work together, or is there a move to move everything over to heat pumps? Just wanted to ask about that.
Yes, thank you. So in talking to Jeff Peasy, who's really the expert in this area, on the capital planning piece, Jeff explained that all five boilers were installed in 1998, like most things in the building when we did the renovation. They're fully cast iron boilers, and the useful life for industry standards is typically 30 to 35 years, so we're coming up on that 30 years in 2028. But of those five, he said one cracked in 2021-ish during COVID, and now this year we've had two crack. So he had already replaced the one. We currently have two that aren't working, and then the last two are okay. But I think what you'll see is we'll likely put those into the capital plan this fall, and I would recommend staggering them. It's sort of like, he's operated under the assumption, and I totally agree with it, of, you know, he hasn't been replacing things until they have started to really go. So there's a sort of, we could be a little bit more proactive about it now that three of the five have been causing problems and put the remaining two on the schedule. They could last another four years, but I think at this point it makes sense to get them on there and stagger the last two so that we are addressing them now that these are going. He was proactive last year in buying a spare with some extra funds that he had, so one of the two we can replace now, and with his usual capital allocation, every year, Town Hall gets $25,000 to kind of just address different needs that come up in the building. So within those funds, he can cover the $9,900 installation fee that Ann had mentioned. It's purchasing the second boiler at this point that we're going to the reserve fund for. And then in terms of the question about the heat pumps, there are about 70 heat pumps in the building also from 1998. We've replaced around 35 or so percent of those. Those do have an annual allocation in the capital plan every year. We try to do two to three at a time, and they typically look at the ones that are in the worst shape around the building. The heat pumps offer both heating and cooling, but the boilers, they work in tandem because the boiler is what runs the hot water through the main loop. I know I sound like I, I think I sound like I know what I'm talking about, but this is all from Jeff Peasy. So the main loop temperature has to be maintained between 75 and 80 degrees, and so in the winter we use the boiler to keep it there, in the summer we use the cooling tower to keep it there, and as long as it's in that temperature, the heat pumps can give us both heat or AC as needed. So they do work in tandem, and Julie had also asked about whether Patricia, our sustainability coordinator, is in the loop, and we'll make sure that her and Jeff are working together to try to make these replacements in the most energy-efficient way as possible, and she's also very good at helping us track down some funding opportunities if there's any green communities or other funding available to do this.
Okay, great, thank you. And just one other question about the reserve fund transfers for the workers' comp and unemployment, the shared services. Does anyone have an idea about what percentage are municipal employees, affected municipal employees versus school employees?
It changes all the time. We, I mean, sometimes we have seven, eight people, sometimes we have three. It's, people come off and go on, so we don't, we don't, I don't have that off the top of my head anyway.
Okay.
But it does change often.
Okay. And then I guess my only thing about legal funds is that I know that the advisory committee used to cry about how we always went over on legal, and then there was an effort to make the budget for legal services more realistic, but it's just, it's just very tall order to do so. So I understand that things come up and just there's a lot of litigation and other matters out there, so thank you.
Does any questions?
For unemployment, do we have any indication of what the May and June invoices will be?
We think that May is going to be probably around $3,000, and June, we anticipate being much higher because the school will have people go out and, you know, just a lot of people, the unemployment goes up in June. July and August are the two highest months for unemployment because of that. So we're not absolutely positive, but we can only look at like history, like what we had like last year, so we're figuring out about the same.
Okay. And for legal, to Julie's point, we know this is a hard one to predict. We tried a budget. We know that it can run into a deficit. Do we know how this compares with last year?
I think, let me look that up real quick. I feel like the transfer was similar. The budget was the same last year for the last several years. We had bumped it up, I think as Julie recalled, it was 80% of the five-year average in FY ' '22, I think is when we added the money, so it's been at the 395 level for the last few years. Let me go back and just double-check really quick, but I feel like it was in the ballpark.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And for all these, we try to do a bit of a buffer just to make sure, like I'd rather transfer more money now, you get the last bills in, you encumber everything and you pay it, and then anything that we don't use falls to fund balance. We're always trying to avoid the four-fifths required vote at town meeting if we don't pay a bill from a prior fiscal year. It just seems, I know we had to do that once a long time ago for like $812, and it just seems kind of silly, so we're trying to avoid it.
Yes, thank you.
It's not shared, it's just in the room.
All right, thank you. All right, why don't we, anything else to add on the reserve, on these, these issues, Ann or Michelle?
Not for the reserve fund, just to go, to continue on to the.
You know, what I'm gonna do, why don't we take these and vote these, and we'll go into department? So with that, if you're ready, I will take the first motion.
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to accounting expenses in the amount of $29,300.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to legal services/expenses in the amount of $271,651.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to police salaries in the amount of $400,000.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to town hall/capital in the amount of $25,500.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to town meeting expenses in the amount of $31,000.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to workers' comp/expenses in the amount of $210,000.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries, and one more?
I make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to unemployment expenses in the amount of $112,971.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. All right, Ann, can you walk us through the intra department transfers?
Yes, just really quick, Liz, I looked it up, and last year the legal transfer request was $270,000, so it was almost exact.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
So next is the intra departmental transfer requests. So these are within departments, so they're going from salaries to expenses or expenses to salaries. The first one is Bathing Beach, and they are asking for $2,300 to be transferred from their salaries to the expenses. And this is so that they can buy a new float for the Bathing Beach. The next is Fire Department, and they are asking for $50,000, and that is to cover the retroactive payment back to 7-1-24 for the Fire Department Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. And the last one is for health insurance, and they are requesting from salaries to expenses for the amount of $6,658, and that is because they eliminated a registered nurse position, and they are using a consultant. So the consultant will be paid out of the expenses instead of the salaries, but it's basically for the same purpose.
Okay. And there's another one on our list, I just want to go over maybe Michelle or Ann. What's the one about the select board chair authorization?
So every year, because we have until July 15th to do these transfers, and typically we're not always meeting at the very last moment, but we have one more payroll, one more payroll, and one or two more AP bills warrants to go out, just in case some other deficits appear or something's off. We ask that both the Chair of the Select Board and the Chair of the Advisory Committee be granted the authority to approve transfers under $10,000, so we can just handle those little pieces if something appears.
Something comes up late, covers the gap, okay.
So we'd work with you and Carol if that, if that happens.
Excellent, all right. And Ann, can you go over the Bathing Beach one again? Because the salaries of the, the only salaries I can think of would be for the lifeguards, and I thought the Rec Department covered the lifeguard salaries.
They manage the lifeguard salaries, but they're still budgeted out of Bathing Beach.
They're still budgeted out of Bathing Beach.
They're kind of sharing some of that, but in talking with, I know Ann and I both talked to Alan Perrott the other day, he calculated the last payroll going out, and then was hoping, this is the cost of one float that he just bought, so he has just enough in there to make it work for one float this year.
You wanted to, but we had enough money for one.
No, it allows you to have one, it's good.
Next year, which starts today, so.
Okay, so for this season?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Liz, do you have any questions?
No other questions, thank you.
Julie, any questions?
I just want to note that our vote sheet has the wrong dollar amount. It's for $8,800, but that's the original budget amount, so they're asking for, I just want to confirm that it's $2,300 that we're voting on?
It is $2,300. Thank you for not creating a new deficit.
Okay. You are welcome. Okay. That is all I have.
All right, anything else to add, Michelle or Ann? Okay, with that, I would take the first motion.
Make a motion to recommend an intra departmental transfer from Bathing Beach salaries to Bathing Beach expenses in the amount of $2,300.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend an intra departmental transfer from fire expenses to fire salaries in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to recommend an intra departmental transfer from health salaries to health expenses in the amount of $6,658.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I make a motion to authorize the Select Board Chair to approve any additional FY ' '25 year-end transfers in amounts not to exceed $10,000 through July 15th, 2025.
Second.
All those favored by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. And that, do we have one more? That's it? Nope?
Nope, that's it.
That's it, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, yeah, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you for all of your work, especially with the police calculations that you had to do, so thank you.
Great job closing out the fiscal year.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Town Administrator's Annual Review. So every year about this time, we do do an annual review of the Town Administrator. I know that we do written ones for Tom as well, but we do present at a public meeting, which I believe is part of your contract, Tom, to do that, yeah? So just, so some of the, some of the highlights of the year, you know, obviously this was a very successful year, but some of the highlights that I've noted, I think first of all, the ability to manage the municipal budget under the 3.5%. I know that it's challenging. I know that you have to really look at different vacancies, different departments, what are their needs are, and I thought you did a great job, you know, getting us to where we needed to be. I'm a big advocate of those growth controls, not only with the municipal side of the budget, but also with the school department and to make sure we're in compliance with the MOU. And I thought that was, you did a great job getting there. Another highlight I thought this year was your, the way you prepare our weekly meetings. I know that you invest a tremendous amount of time and effort into making sure our meetings are just, everybody's prepared, the department heads are ready to go, ready with questions. Communication with the three of us, obviously individually, is important, and I know you put a great effort into it, and I thought the quality of the meetings this year went very, very well. Also, I would note that I thought there were some key personnel hires this year, you know, the DPW Superintendent, longtime Superintendent Sylvester left. We were able to hire Ashley, who's already off to a great start, which is great, our Veteran Service Office as well. Keith was a longtime employee of the town, and Shannon is doing a wonderful job there, so he did a great job managing personnel. And lastly, I would note, I thought it was an excellent town meeting, and obviously the Advisory Committee, it's their warrant, you know, they manage the warrant, but your office is the one that really puts everything together and helps advisory go through that process. I've said this to you privately, I'm happy to say it publicly, I think your work ethic is second to none. I know how much you care about this community and the people in it and the employees, and I think those probably, of everything I've said tonight, I think those are your two greatest attributes that you have in this role. So as, in terms of going forward next year, this coming year, I know that I'm not going to go into all of our goals again, but the areas of capital, personnel, communications, fiscal stewardship, those are some of the bigger goals. We have, we have many more under those categories. And what I'd like to work with you on is strategic plans to meet all of those goals. And I think what I'm going to recommend to Julie and Liz is, I think two years ago, we would do quarterly check-ins on those goals, where you would update the board on where we are with our capital goals, where are we with communications, personnel, and I'm going to recommend to my colleagues that we bring that back again, and so we're able to put a strategy in place to get from here to town meeting of '26. So, well done, great job, and I turn it over to Liz for any additional comments. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Bill. I guess I'll just add a couple of things in terms of looking back on the year and our successes. The Center for Active Living Capital Project is moving forward, which I know we're all very excited about, and that has taken a lot of time and energy from you, Tom. When I wrote the review, I said near-successful completion of public safety facilities, so thrilled that that is open and functioning and excited to do the ribbon-cutting this summer. Another thing that was new this year that I don't think Bill mentioned was the Local Government Academy, which was a great way to just kind of engage with the community, let them see what really happens at town hall, and just learn more about their government and how they can be active and their own advocates. So I think I'm excited to see that go forward. Also, you know, creative recruiting retention strategies, the implementation of the four-day work week, I think that's worked really well and has been a nice benefit for employees, and we've heard, you know, good feedback from the community as well. and we've heard, you know, good feedback from the community as well. Certainly managing to the 3.5% budget growth is hard to do, and that is a goal that we were not willing to waver on. But the ability to do that while also keeping a high level of services for our community members and maintaining the AAA bond rating, I think is really a huge success. Similar to what Bill said in terms of the goals for this year, continuing to work on retention, development of staff, communication, you know, is a big one for me. I look forward to, you know, continue to work on the financial management plan as we move forward, as well as the 10-year capital plan, and then certainly economic development is a big goal for us this year, so look forward to working on that with you. But thank you for your dedication, your work ethic, all that you do for the town. We have a very well-managed, successful town, and it's in large part to you, your leadership, and the people in this room, and certainly the people in this building, so thank you.
Thank you, Liz. I would just add too, I was a longtime liaison to Plymouth County, and I would go to the Plymouth, when I would go to the Plymouth County advisory committee meetings and made some friendships there, and got to know people over the years, I did with us along, and a lot of people in other communities would say, you know, your town is very well managed, well-run, you have great volunteers, it's just a great town. So it was really, for me, it was really nice to hear that from other neighboring towns in our community. So I attribute that to you and your team, and to all of our employees that work in our community. So Julie, you weren't on the board, you're welcome, you're welcome as a resident, you know, you're welcome to add, or even maybe what you want to say about going forward too, so.
Right, I'm not going to say anything about this past year because I wasn't on the board, but I'm really excited with the goals we've put together for the coming year, and I think it's going to be a great year, and I'm just excited to be here, a part of this team, so.
Great. Thank you all very much. I love working with this town, I say it every year, it's an absolute privilege, and I know that, so I treat it that way. Doesn't always have to be that way, I know that, and I will always, I promised Mary, Karen, and Paul nine years ago that I would always put the town first in every decision I make on behalf of it, and I like to think that that's what I do. Work closely with all three of you, and you guys are awesome, you always have been. So, Julia, looking forward to the next several years with you, and continuing to do what we do, which is help the people in this community live the best lives that they can. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, our appointments and/or reappointments. We do have a couple this evening. As I noted, we spent three full nights in June interviewing motivated enthusiastic residents to serve the community, so happy that we get a couple this evening. So if we're ready, we'll start. Julie, you'd like to start?
Sure. For a reappointment, I make a motion to reappoint Lori Freeman to the Conservation Commission through July 31st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Melissa Smith to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Amy Muldoon to the Commission on Disabilities for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Doug Troyer to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Rory Early to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Callie Lennon to the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Thomas Kelly to the Harbor Development Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Justin Aborn to the Historic District's Commission as the Planning Board designee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Carlson as the Tree Warden for the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Julie.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we return to town administrator's select board reports, and let's start this evening with Michelle.
Happy new fiscal year, woo! It's FY25.
That's right. All right.
Yes, I have two. First, I just want to note that earlier this week, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, or Mast dot, announced $6.8 million in grant awards for their Shared Streets and Spaces program. It's all about, that program is all about providing project funding to cities and towns to design and implement changes to curb streets and parking areas in support of public health, public safety, mobility, and community growth. Bricks and mortar kinds of things, the fundamentals that help make a community more functional and more attractive. JR Frye, our town engineer, led an application effort that resulted in an award of about $250,000. And that is targeted towards work in the Lincoln Square area to improve connectivity and pedestrian safety, as well as improving the traffic flow in that area. A lot of work was invested, and I think we're very excited to have the resources to actually implement some plans that JR has led the development on. And second, I just want to highlight some work that our DPW and JR Frye, our town engineer, have been working on, and that is crosswalk improvements in the square. Many of you may have seen that over the past week or so, the crosswalks have been improved, not just repainted, but also milled and in the paint mix, the inclusion of pumice and sand to make the crosswalks more, improve the traction of the crosswalks to make them easier and safer for folks to cross, especially in wet weather. I believe that work is complete, and I know the folks were excited to have that work done in advance of the parade.
All right, thanks very much. Julie, anything tonight?
I do, I'm really excited to announce about the Hingham Playground that is opening to the public this Thursday, July 3rd. So this, you know, the Recreation Commission and Recreation Department work very hard, and they are busy with their camps and their road race, but they're also really good at keeping track and maintaining and updating our recreation facilities around town. They have a terrific track record of projects. And so this new playground was rebuilt, and it was fully funded by a community preservation grant, and I just want to congratulate everyone involved in that project, and it's been a